To our regular scheduled board meeting of the Metropolitan School District of North Posey for our September 12th board meeting, and by doing so, please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, our first item up is the approval of the consent agenda, consent items, which includes the minutes from the previous meeting of August 29th and the claim docket that covers the periods of August 30th to September 12th, along with the other consent items as listed. Entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent items.
I'll second it.
So the motion by Mrs. Will, and seconded by Mr. Schmidt to approve the consent agenda as listed. Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Patron's concern, and we have Ms. Sarah Ashburn who's listed to address, so the floor is yours.
Okay. I would like to take a moment of your time to bring up a topic several parents would like to see continued discussion with in MSDS of North Posey. Last year, two parents suggested the idea of having a structured school dress code or uniform policy for the students within our school district. I personally know of several parents in the community who were happy to see an online survey that was created gaining additional feedback. Since the beginning of the school year, a few parents stated the discussion again of the uniform policy. We discussed, we decided to begin our research and wanted, by wanting to first identify who might support uniforms. I would like to now share our findings. We decided to start a page on social media that was simply titled Uniforms for North Posey Schools. The description of the page reads, "This group is for anybody, anyone who supports uniforms for North Posey students. If you support a structured dress code like this page, within 24 hours, and to this day, there are more than 204 members that like our page." This page was not created to be a vote. We did not ask anyone to voice an opinion, even though a few people who made comments that they did not support school uniforms and some may have been undecided, most all continue to be members of our page. Several members of the community shared their thoughts and why they support uniforms. One parent's comment stated, "Uniforms give children a sense of pride in their education, which is exemplified by their respectful attitude towards their schoolwork, their teachers, fellow students, and the facilities themselves. Schools that employ uniforms have higher student achievement and fewer discipline problems. Uniforms even out a disparity in students in terms of economic status and ethnic differences." I would vote for wearing uniforms first through 12th grades, make it happen, NV. Another parent stated, "I was on the committee several years ago that brought uniforms to EVSC. There are many positive results that do come out of uniforms, and I wholeheartedly support it. We realize that there is a lot of work that needs to be done to explore this kind of change. We are asking the school corporation at this time to have additional discussions about uniforms, perhaps even explore the idea of a committee like EVSC to investigate it further." We need to keep in mind a survey or just social media will not reach everyone in the community. On behalf of the community who support school uniforms, we thank you in advance for your time and consideration. And this is the information that we, the people that support, supported us on Facebook, and I was told to show it to you. I'm just...
Were you giving a strict...
Yes, I'm the spokesperson. I'm Tim.
And just as clarification, I mean, we do have a school dress code policy-
Right.
-that I would consider to be structured.
Well...
So we do-
I didn't write that.
Right, no, I get that. I get that. I just want to be clear. And I think the board's position is that we are still open to further discussions of this. It's-
Right.
There's pretty heated opinions on both sides, I would say.
Does Evansville have a uniform policy or a dress for success?
They have a dress for success policy.
Yeah, it's not a uniform.
Well, they have to wear polos and solid pants in the lower grades, but then the upper's like, I know for a fact-
I think it's called dress for success. It used to be.
But they ought, like, for instance, rides has to wear, they can wear button-ups, but they can be plaid and such, you know, but they have, it depends what school.
Thank you, we appreciate it. All right, there's no other patrons concerned. New business.
Just now, I'd like to go ahead and make a statement up at the top. Mrs. Crawleton asked to spend $5,748 to purchase 12 iPads in the consent items. Actually, I got with Eric late today, and I wrote this on here, it's a little bit less, it's $5,635, and it's for 15 iPads instead of 12. They changed, they remodeled the iPads or did something with the iPads, and because of that, they were able to get them a little less, and they were able to get three more. So, anyway, so whenever, I'd like to amend that.
I assume you'll amend your motion?
I will amend my motion.
You as well?
$5,625.
Yeah, less money and more iPads, I can't see any problem with that.
So we have amended motion, is that the only change?
Yeah.
So we have amended motion and amended second. Any other comments regarding that or questions?
How do I note that?
You just change, you just change the number.
I changed it up there.
Yeah, that's it.
That's it, okay.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
I was stumbling through the papers when y'all did that.
We were trying to get a head start.
And next on the list, we've gone through all the processes of approving the board, the budget for 2017. I would like to request the board approve forms 1, 2, 3, 4, 4A and 4B, the debt worksheet, the CPF plan, the bus replacement plan. Also, I'd like to ask the board to approve the rainy day fund transfer resolution, the resolution for the fall budget hearing, the resolution to adopt a capital project, 2017 capital projects plan, the resolution to adopt the 2017 bus replacement plan, our tax neutrality resolution, and the 2017 budget transfer resolution. I'd like to ask the board to approve all of these documents at this time.
Entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the budget forms and resolutions as presented.
So we have a motion by Mr. Oakley and seconded by Mr. Stock to approve the budget forms as presented by Dr. Camp. Before I take a vote, I will say, I believe at least one of these forms requires a call vote, is that right?
Yeah, once you approve all of these, I'm gonna have you sign all of them.
Right, you have to sign approving, isn't it a in favor or a a or an a?
Yeah, I mean, I've asked you to approve them all, so you gotta do it all.
So you have to sign-
Yeah, you have to sign.
Verification of the vote, just to make that clear. Any other comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
Let's go ahead and go through the signing process and, at this point. That is the, that is the budget and the, that's the yea or nay that he's talking about. And then here is all of the resolutions in each one of them.
Amy has extra places to sign, she has to attest as well.
Following this, what we will do, we will send a, we'll send to the paper tomorrow a notice to the taxpayers of the approval of the CPF plan and a notice to the taxpayers' approval of the bus replacement plan, and that will be published in the next paper. Kind of the process at this point, we will turn it into our field rep, Robert Norris. Robert Norris then will review the budget, any additions or cuts that he will make, he will, they'll make there with the DLGF. They'll give us a budget order hopefully before the end of December, and then we'll be able to start the 2017 budget with the budget order in place. Unlike the four years we had that John Wood was here when the county was behind, we were four years behind. We were doing budgets for the next year on budgets we didn't have, for the next year on budgets we didn't have. It was a mess, but the county got caught back up, it was during all of that reassessment. There were a lot of counties in that situation, but, you know, the last few years have been pretty steady.
Don't get them out of order.
When we send the budget packet up, it gets about twice as, because there's, Bill has to attest on some different things on our bond issues, we have the Form 9s that have to go, whatever, it gets thick. They have made it a lot easier with the gateway though, as far as submitting everything. That it? Thank you, the 2017 budget process is pretty much complete, as far as you guys are concerned. Next, I've been telling you about the textbook adoption. A few years back, the state changed how you could do textbook rental, and as a result, the cash bound, you're not supposed to make money on textbook rental, you're supposed to break even, and with some changes they made with the Indiana Code and statute, and with people that we have that are on free and reduced lunch and the non-pays, we have created a deficit in our textbook fund. Now, there are some people that have been in this deficit financing in textbook for the last 10 years, so we've been extremely lucky that we are just now at that point. But we have bills to pay, and the textbook fund itself does not have the money in it to pay it. And the textbook fund is based on the fees that you charge the kids. We can't raise the fees, statute doesn't let you. And you've ordered the books because they change the standards, and to do well enough in I-Step and the different tests, you have to have the books with the correct standards, so we don't have a choice but buy the books. So as a result, we find that fund $54,187.79 in the red. We need to pay McGraw-Hill, so I'm asking the board from this day forward that we will use general fund or rainy day to support the textbook fund until the state does something to correct that fund. So we need to pay McGraw-Hill this money, and I'm requesting that we pay that, pay them on a general fund and/or rainy day for this year. And we'll probably need to do this every year, but if we have to and they don't change, I'll ask you to pass the resolution. This is for the one time thing, it's time.
Entertain a motion?
And I will say that the committee that came together, there were three or four books that were available, and we didn't get the cheapest book, and we didn't get the most expensive book. We got one right out of the middle, and come to find out, the book we chose is better equipped for our kids than, you know, after the research that they did. They had a panel together, and they did a ton of research on these math books, so, before they chose them. So we do have a very functional math book, and they did change the standards, so we will be compliant with the standards. And I'll say again, this is gonna happen next year because they changed the standards with the science books, and so there's no way that, and there is a science test, and so therefore, to be able to do well on the test, you have to have the book with the correct standards in it. So we're gonna have to buy those books, and they're gonna be expensive as well. We won't, we might come out of it when we do our miscellaneous and our art, and we're collecting textbook rental, we'll come out of it then, and we'll be all right for three or four years, and then we'll go back into this cycle if something doesn't happen at the state level.
Entertain a motion?
Make a motion, we pay the balance to McGraw-Hill for the vote.
I'll second it.
So the motion by Mr. Stock and seconded by Mr. Schmidt to cover the deficit needed to satisfy the McGraw-Hill fund or bill, the general fund or rainy day fund to neutralize the textbook rental fund, that's presented by Dr. Camp. Any comments or questions?
Question. The state does still reimburse some on the free and reduced?
Yes.
Do you have any idea how much they reimburse?
Yes, we used to get 100% back in the old days, but it's more like 75% now, 60%. It's low. And we do have the ability to go to debt service and take the uncollected money that, you know, at the end of the day, I mean, everybody hasn't paid as of yet. We will get some more money in to that textbook fund. We'll have the ability to say, all right, you know, ballparking a figure, $10,000, we had a shortfall. We could go to debt service and charge the taxpayers to pay that. Traditionally, we never have, because, just say, you paid your textbook rental, and we've got people that didn't pay, now we're gonna collect from you in taxes to pay their textbook rental. And so traditionally, we've never done that, and I would like to not have to do that. And maybe, maybe, may come a day where we have to, but hopefully we don't. There's a lot of talk in, with the legislators now about the textbooks, because everybody's having trouble with it, and we're one of the only states left in the United States that still charges textbook rental. So most corporations and states provide the textbooks, so.
Some of that $54,000 will come back in?
It will come back in, but we, I mean, like we were talking when we were deciding to do this, well, I mean, yeah, we could put it back in general fund, but then, you know, next year when we do, you know, it's gonna be that much less they have, and we'll have to do it again, so. But, you know, all the people haven't paid yet, and then Amy, we send out letters and the principals do some work, but then Amy goes down to court, and we try to collect everything for the non-payers, but they have till October before you send the first letter?
Well, I don't send mine till spring.
Yeah.
Yeah, the schools try to collect, but the problem is, the non-payers have learned the system, and so they just don't pick up their mail when they get my letter from the court, and if they don't, if I don't get service on them, I can't collect on them. So majority of my list right now that's still unpaid from the last four years, and I have some that are on there every year, there are no service, so I can't do anything to collect. Or I'll get some that I get a judgment on them, but then they don't have employer for me to garnish wages, so I, I mean, there's probably five, six thousand every year that I can't collect anymore.
The other thing is, if we go to debt service to build index, that's always a year behind, too, so, I mean, once we start that process, that would be a year behind, so we just, we haven't done that yet. But I'm hoping that the legislators change this, I mean, they should, and they've been talking about it, and they've been talking about better assistance and changing it, but you just never know.
Any other comments, questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
At this time, I'm asking for us to do an additional appropriation in the rainy day fund. The rainy day fund, we, this year, we had, we only asked for $500,000 in appropriation. We have over a million dollars in rainy day, so it's funds we already have in there, it's not that we have to raise money or anything like that, it's that we're asking permission to spend money we already have. With that being said, I don't think that we're going to have to spend it, I would, but I don't wanna get into November and say, man, we have a problem, and I don't have any more appropriation, and, because you can't file in November. So this is a precautionary measure, I don't think we will spend this money, and it is money we already have, so it's, I'm asking for an additional appropriation in the rainy day fund, just in case we have an emergency right at the end of the year to make sure we have enough appropriation to cover everything.
What is that?
I've no idea.
That is the furnace, and it does that about once every two or three days.
Days, no, two or three hours.
Good thing it doesn't do it at night.
It does. It does.
All right, entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the additional appropriations to the rainy day fund.
Second?
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Schmidt and seconded by Mr. Oakley to approve the additional appropriation on the rainy day fund for $200,000 as requested by Dr. Camp. Any other comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
What we'll do now is we'll advertise that in the paper, we will hold a hearing in the October meeting, kinda like the budget hearing, we'll hold a hearing to explain to any taxpayers that wanna know, and then after we hold the hearing, then we can send proof that we have the cash to the state, the DLGF, and then they will, they will up our appropriations by the $200,000. That's kind of the process that it takes, so that's why I wanna do it now, and I'll wait until November. Next thing on the list, asking the board to approve the summer projects of 2017. These are just the main, the main big projects, it's not all the little things that we're going to do, it's just the weight room and the wrestling room. And the way that I'm going to set this up is, we're gonna set the weight room up as the main project, and then alternate one will be the wrestling room, to take the existing area and gut it and make it into a wrestling room. Alternate three will be to provide the padding and the mats for the wrestling room, and alter, the next alternate will be for, I said three, I think that would be two, and then the next alternate would be to put in X amount of dollars for weight equipment. And the reason I'm gonna structure it that way is to protect us from any hardships or anything that may happen, so if we go through the advertising process and we go through the bidding process, if for some reason prices would be way over what we estimate, then we could cherry pick a little bit, but I do not foresee us not being able to do every project, all the projects in every alternate, so. But, anyway, that, that's just a protection that we're gonna set up, so. But if you're giving me permission to move forward, then we'll move forward with starting the bid process for these projects.
Entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the summer 2017 projects.
Second?
I'll second it.
So the motion by Mrs. Will and seconded by Mr. Schmidt to approve the summer 2017 projects at, to be, go out for bid as requested by Dr. Camp. Any other comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
Eric Long submitted a list of items that either broken or no longer useful to the corporation to declare surplus, they have no value, and he would like to declare these items surplus and turn them into, it's the company that we bought all those monitors from, you know, $50 each that were, so he turns them in there, and then that's what helps us get when we buy stuff from them as well, so he's declaring those surplus and shipping them to there.
Entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the surplus list.
Second?
I'll second it.
So a motion by Mr. Oakley and seconded by Mr. Stock to approve the items presented as a surplus list by Eric Long, presented by Dr. Camp. Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
Okay, professional leave, I have one additional request, I would like to ask permission to add to the professional leave request. This one is from Natalie McCauley. On Thursday, she received notice that they're having a veneer lab quest workshop at USI from eight o'clock to noon. USI will reimburse for the sub, there's no registration fee.
She got that on Thursday, gave it to Scott on Friday, and I was out on Friday.
Okay, and we have, as you can see, quite a few professional leave requests, I just wanted to point out that not all of those are coming from general fund. Posey County Special Services is paying for the special education teachers to go to Jasper. ECA is paying for the coaches' trip to Indianapolis. There's quite a few grade first and second grade teachers attending the close reading workshop that's coming out of the early intervention grant. And the other thing I wanna point out, that Steve Kavanaugh, as far as safe and secure schools, professional development, you just recently approved him going to a safety academy in Indianapolis. This one specifically, we're sending him to, has a national known speaker for active shooter type of policy and procedure. He even has templates for schools if he go to this, so we're sending Steve to go there and get more of the information so that we can really hone down what our district policy and procedure would be, utilizing these templates that he'll get at that conference. And then lastly, on the principals' conference coming up, on Steve Kavanaugh and Shannon McMunn, their entry fee was part of their mentor-type programs that both of them are participating in, that it's over the next two years, and I don't know if you recall, that was like over $500, but part of that was to pay for these conferences, so that'll be already paid for as far as those two, from earlier.
The other thing, Steve Kavanaugh is up for principal of the year, and that will be, at that conference, it will be, it will be named, whether or not he gets it or not, he's district principal of the year, but it will be named at that conference. And also, Aaron is up for assistant principal of the year. And, you know, if you recall, Virgil won the athletic director of the year, I mean, we're talking about for the whole state, and he won it for the whole state, and then Kelly has been recommended for, she has won the district twice, but she's not won the state, so she's been up there. So we've had, we've had good representation from our administrators across the state with those awards.
Entertain a motion?
Make a mo-
Go ahead, Mark.
I'll make a motion to approve the professional leave request.
You have the second?
Second.
So the motion by Mr. Stock and seconded by Mr. Schmidt to approve the personnel leave request as presented by Dr. Wannamore. Any other comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
And under reports, we have the North Posey High School September Council newsletter for you to look at, also we have the monthly mileage fuel report, and state representative meeting September the 29th at North Elementary, and right now, we'll say in the library.
It is in the gym.
It is in the gym, for sure. In the gym, for sure. All right.
I did have a question on that.
Okay.
As far as advertising, do we want to do a formal advertisement in Posey County News or do a press release?
We can, and we can put it on our webpage as well, which it may already be.
There was one in the paper this past week.
Was there?
And Mount Vernon's already said they were coming, I know that, because Tom's, I've talked to Tom.
Seems like it is out there pretty good. I'll make sure we're doing all we can.
I will, Amy, if you remind me, let's try to just put a- I, uh, Amy, if you remind me, let's try to just put a, get something and put it in the paper, I'll put, I'll write something up if you just remind me tomorrow. You'll have to correct that.
That's allergy, right?
Uh, so, um, the next board meeting is scheduled for October the tenth, that is on, uh, poll break?
Yeah.
I have a hard time saying that every time. And are we, uh, all in favor of moving that to the eleventh, which is Tuesday?
Yes.
Yep.
And so we'll keep that meet, we'll move that mo, meeting to Tuesday, uh, October the eleventh. And it'll be the regular time, executive session five-thirty and the board meeting at six-thirty. And between now and then, the board will be traveling to Indianapolis to go to the ISBA and, uh, Superintendent's Association Joint Meeting. And this was at the twenty-fifth, sixth and seventh, fourth, fifth and sixth or twenty-fifth, sixth and seventh. And, um, we'll be communicating, I'll be communicating with you by email and we'll figure out the travel arrangements and, uh, everybody at the table, I think, is attending, so.
Anybody else have anything really good to call us?
Did y'all decide who's going to the regional meeting on the tenth then?
Uh-
Yes, yes, we did.
We did decide that.
Okay.
So you can send that out as a individual request, I guess, if anybody's interrupt, you know, to sign up. Um, the only thing I had was I thought we had really good, uh, event Friday, I guess was, I don't know what the official title of it was, a school spirit.
Sunrise Spotlight.
Sunrise Spotlight thing, it seemed to generate a lot of buzz in the community and throughout the school and. It was really neat to see it included into the elementary schools and the junior high as well, so. I personally did not get up at that hour, but my, uh, my kids did and, uh, I did see the, uh, the displays the night before. The kids did a really good job with that and, so, kudos to the high school.
Well, I know Angie and, uh, Amy both attended and Amy attended and I was in hospital with my wife.
I need my beauty sleep as much as I can get, so.
And the following I-69 vote was pretty neat too.
Yes.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that was great experience. It seemed like there was a lot of, a lot of buzz around that.
Did they ever get the amount of poundage that we had?
Sixteen, sixteen thousand.
We're winning.
What was it?
Eighteen, eighteen.
Which was pretty impressive because Harrison was the week before us, is that right?
Yep.
So the school, probably five times our size, we beat.
I've never heard that.
Thousand pounds more, no?
A thousand, right, right.
Yeah, we were a thousand pounds higher. The bad thing is they keep announcing how many poundage you have and so it goes through the end of football, is that right?
Yeah, we were only week two.
Yeah, so, well, no, 'cause Forest Park went first.
Was it the elementary?
No, they, they won last year.
They won last year, yeah, so just Harry, so that's the-
So they launched it this year, just showing what they won last year.
Yeah. Yeah, it was all three schools.
Gotcha, gotcha. So, there you go.
They did the Olympics at South Texas.
It was, it was good.
No, it was a good event. Alright, anybody else have anything? Entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
You got the second. So, uh, first by Mrs. Will, seconded by Mr. Schmidt to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.